On Monday, February 27, 6:30, please, I rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes for February 6th, March 13th. No, I'm sorry, February 13th and February 22nd.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from February 13th as written.
Okay, I got February 13th, you know, do February 6th first?
Uh, yeah.
You weren't here, right? Okay, February 13th, okay. Have a motion, do I have a second for 13th?
Wait, are you doing them both together?
No, just for 13th because the individual making the motion can't do the 6th because she was not here.
Well, I make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, February 6th as written.
Okay, Monday, February 6th, I have a second. Okay, motion, a second, any discussion concerning the minutes?
John?
Yes.
I heard the motion for the 13th, what was the?
Well, we're doing the motion for the 6th, we're standing by for the motion for the 13th, that's gonna be next. She already made the motion, we're gonna get a second here in a second.
Okay, so now we're dealing with the 6th?
That's correct.
Okay, I understand.
Yes, sir. Okay, so I have a motion, a second, any other discussion concerning that? I see none, John?
On the?
Yes.
The 6th?
The 6th.
Seven, uh, there should be some, something there, other than... There's actually nothing about what was discussed.
On which line item is that?
Number seven on February 6th.
We didn't, uh...
It was even discussed.
We didn't discuss it, that's why.
Probably shouldn't have gone there at all.
Well, then it should be something there saying that there was some discussion and no action taken.
Okay, okay.
They need a change for that?
Yeah, we need to add no discussion was taken concerning number seven. Good catch. A motion, a second, obviously with the, with the change of number seven, any other discussion? I see none, John?
Yes.
Julie?
Abstain.
Doug?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. I have a motion on the table for February 13th. For minutes as written. Any second?
Did you say as written?
Yes.
I have changes.
Okay, I have changes, okay.
And now second, so...
Are you, are you guys getting this package by email?
I am, and I come in and get it.
Are you guys getting these packets by email?
They're ready on Thursday.
Okay.
You want me to discuss my changes without a second, or, I mean, how are we doing this?
Well, I mean, obviously, there's changes, I mean, we do have a motion for, but there's no second.
Okay.
So, if you have changes, I would...
So, I would look, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2017 with the following changes, under section 4B. The co-chair is from Phillipston, not Royalston. We don't have an agreement with Royalston. Then, there also, I don't know why I didn't circle it, but... There was another place, I don't know if it was here, and another one where it said tree instead of three, but under Board and Staff Member Comments and Reports, if I remember correctly. Kelly Pontbran made comments, Diana second something, and I asked about the, where my email stood with the IG. And that's not on here at all, and I'm pretty sure that was this meeting. So, those are my three things, but I wish I could figure out where the other... It's just a typo, it's not a... It doesn't change the subject, whatever I saw.
You can email to me if I do that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You can email me if I have to.
Okay, it was just one, I don't know why I didn't circle them, but I was like...
It should be Vice Chair Margaret Hughes from Phillipston.
Yep. Vice Chair Margaret Hughes from Phillipston, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, that's what I was saying, it's not relevant.
Did you get that, Holly?
Yeah.
Awesome.
But I'll send you those.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept with changes, so I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, any other discussion? I see none, John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Abstain.
Diane?
Uh, yes.
And I vote yes as well. The workshop, February 22nd.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday. We met on Monday?
No, it was Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
Okay, so that now, what? That needs to be changed to Wednesday, February 22nd.
Yep.
With that change, and I, I don't think this was the one that I had another change to, Holly, so... I don't know where I saw that.
Okay, so a motion with the amount of change for the, for the day, any other discussion? No, any, do I need a second? Yes, I'll second that. A motion, a second, any other discussion? I see none, John?
Abstain.
Thank you, Julie?
Abstain.
Thank you. Doug?
Yes.
Diane?
Oh, yes.
Yes, and I vote yes as well.
Just thinking.
Thank you. Okay, new business, Crow Hill Recreation Track Permit. Crow Hill, hey, how are you folks? I'm great, thank you. All the paperwork's all set for them?
All the paperwork's in, and I talked with the departments that need to have an input, and they're all, they're all good with it.
Okay.
I just, I'm sorry, I just have one question, because I don't know, I know we've approved for you before, so it just says, "The 2017 schedule is subject to change," but if we approve this, like, is that always what it says? And you can pick and choose different days, I don't think I've ever noticed that before, sorry.
Up to the nine, like, to the, we like to know what the schedule and the arrangements were thing, but we're only, only up to nine events.
I make a motion to approve the recreation track permit for Crow Hill Motorsports Park LLC for the, from January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017. Second.
All right, a motion, a second, any other discussion? From the board members, John, you have anything to add?
No, I just, I did go through the paperwork, as long as the boards and the chief are on board.
Okay, anything there?
Nope, I'm good.
Obviously, you guys have been in business for a while, right?
Over there.
Okay. Most of the documentation that's been provided is all, is like 2002, 2005. It would probably, as a business organization, be in your best interest to at least update some of that paperwork that's being provided to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, the last police letter that's in here is ridiculous, so obviously, we have a new Chief of Police, Mr. Chief Bennett. It would probably, you know, just to update some of your paperwork that you can provide to us. But, but that's all I have.
The approval letters from them, you mean?
Yeah, there was all the dispositions that we received.
This is just what's in their file, I don't want to...
John, this is just what's in their file, this is what we've seen before, we always...
Is there any new stuff that's...
This is just when it was approved, those are supposed to be attached to their license every year. So, that's just the initial approval, and it's supposed to be attached to their license.
Okay, so they don't get re-approved every year?
No.
We, we approve their license.
Okay, so they don't get any newer, new documentation from the Chief of Police saying they're up to standard, or...
Well, they, I email all of them, and they all get back from the Board of Health.
Is that their email correspondence?
Yes.
There's no written correspondence?
Well, it's a email.
Okay.
Sometimes the chief, they come and we ask them those questions, and they're just, they don't happen to be here.
Okay.
We'd never, this was their initial, I mean, ones from 2002, from when you first asked for... I understood it just to be the background that Holly has provided in the past.
I got it, I got it.
I wouldn't even have to provide that anymore, really.
Yeah, that, that kinda confused me a little bit, but I'm good now, thank you so much. I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? I see none, John?
Yes.
Diane?
Uh, yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes, I gotta change it up a little bit, I vote yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
On the 268A Notice of Disclosure Financial Interests, does that look like Mr. Tenzini?
268A provides that in certain circumstances, when there is a perceived conflict between an employee and their interests on behalf of the public, they can assure compliance with the ethics statute by filing a notice of this type with the appointing authority. And related to that is Item C, whereby members of certain boards and commissions can be designated as special municipal employees. And I would have Mr. Castle address both these on behalf of himself personally and the Cable Committee, if you would, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good, Mr. Castle.
Yep. So, I'm filing these disclosures with you because of my role as a station manager for TCTV. I'm also involved with Cable TV Advisory Committee as a member, and we've been negotiating the contract with Comcast. It could be seen that I may have a financial interest in the contract because it may specify, you know, additional funding for the PEG station. And this came to my attention, so we checked with the Ethics Commission, and they suggested that I filed these disclosures. And what it basically says is that I disclose that I may have an interest in it, or I may be perceived to have an interest in it, and that I vow to act honorably and with integrity and impartially as much as I can. I will tell people, you know, first of all, one of the things is the Comcast contract, and we want to be able to bring that to the board next meeting, if we can get three more words settled on the contract with Comcast. And I need to bring that to the Cable Committee for their approval as well. So, I act mostly as, you know, I'm not just the one doing the negotiating. We have a lawyer, an attorney, who does the negotiating on behalf of the Cable Committee, and I act as the coordinator and the messenger between the two, and the same with the Select Board, as it relates on, to bring that to the board. And this would allow me to take part in some of those discussions, I may abstain from the vote anyways. And as far as budget matters go with the Cable Committee, I have already told them that I will not participate in any budget discussions regarding personnel. Even though my agreement with the town to do this only runs through setting up a 501(c)(3), and I would like everyone to know, I don't know if I'm gonna be involved beyond that. So, a 501(c) nonprofit would be established, hopefully with the cable, with the TCTV cable station, to run that, and they would want to pick or hire a station manager, maybe an executive director. I don't know if I'm going to want one of those positions, that's up to the board too, whether they would want. My goal right now is to bring this contract to the board and get that done and settled, and possibly help the Cable Committee get the 501(c)(3) established and anything other, any other things that we can do. And, you know, I made a couple promises to the Board of Selectmen, and one was that I would, you know, work to make TCTV and help bring the community together, help bring the school together, we've been doing that with an internship program at the school that's going really, really well. And also that I would look into having a plan to make the TV station self-sufficient, because this may be the last cable contract with the regulatory issues around cable TV. And, you know, the, the cable industry has its, has a nice regulatory environment right now that they can get a lot of things changed. And everyone, nobody really knows what's gonna happen with streaming on the internet, we only do TV, so if all those revenues go to the internet, it's done. You have no more revenue coming in. And I said, you know, to this board, it would be negligent, I think, of, of me and any board not to devise a plan. So, my goal is to bring that governing board, whether it's Board of Selectmen or Board, Board of Directors, I guess, this, these revenue streams that I've identified and these opportunities, and whether they go forward with that, want me involved with that, that's their decision. So, and I think anyone who's worked with me knows me to be fair and honorable and, you know, and pretty unbiased. And that's the role I have to play with the TV station, is, I think a lot of you have heard my stock response when people ask me what I think of an issue, and I say, "I hope the audio came out." And it's, it's kind of a joke, but, and it's kind of a brush-off too, but I can't have a public opinion on a lot of these issues because I would be biased if I did, and you don't want a biased TV station. So, I'm used to acting very objective and impartially as someone who's been in journalism. And believe it or not, there are good journalists who act impartially. Ones at the Gardner News, I think, and, and this is how I think, you know. I don't think in terms of this issue versus that, or I have a financial interest here, I think in terms of, you know, how we can make the TV station the best that it can be for the town and to serve the town in that capacity, so...
Great, thanks, Steve. So, so the notice of disclosure's been filed with the Board of Selectmen's Office, so I would assume that's good to go?
You need to...
Do I need to vote on that?
Do we need to appoint?
You need to, I would suggest that you first, take action to...
Accept.
Designate all members of the Cable Committee as special municipal employees, authorizing the chairman to sign that designation. Once that is done, then I would suggest you act upon Steve's personal notice of disclosure.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to name the Templeton Cable TV Advisory Committee members to be special municipal employees. Do we have a form that he has?
There is a form.
With a form that to be signed, sorry, by the chairman of the board.
A motion, a second, any discussion concerning municipal employees? I see none, John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
With that in place, Mr. Chairman, you can accept this notice of disclosure, and that also would be signed by you on behalf of the appointing authority, should the board so act.
I make a motion to accept the conflict of interest disclosure from Mr. Castle, to be signed by the chairman of the board.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion concerning the disclosure? See none, John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for your...
You guys are doing great work over there.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Action on tomb restoration bids?
I would refer to the superintendent, Mr. Mayo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We went out to bid for the tombs for the final phase, Phase 3. We have a grant plus through the Mass Historical Commission.
Yep.
Fifty-fifty match on the construction bit. During the process, we advertised in Central Register, we advertised in the Gardner News, we sent out prevailing wages to all of the bidders. In your packet, you should have a list of the bidders, all your information on the prevailing wages, the process of the bidding. We had a bid opening on February 1st. The town administrator, myself, and three members of the Tomb Restoration Committee were present. The bids were opened by the town administrator in red. You have the results of the bids. Low bid was MJS Construction. All of the bid, the two bids that came in were subject to looking over to make sure they had all of the appropriate attachments, which they did. I have since done a reference check on both bidders. Been in contact with the Mass Historical Commission, which you have an email with their response in your packet, that they approved the selection of low bidder. My Cemetery Commission also approved the selection of low bidder. So, this is the final step. So, my recommendation for you is to award the low bid contract to MJS Construction for the final phase of the restoration of those tombs.
Alan, for the record, would you mention the contract value?
The, the low bid was $99,420. The next bid was $114,300. And our grant requires us to spend $100,000. So, we are right in the ballpark with the low bid. We do have a little bit of contingency in case we have an issue with it. So, it kind of all aligns to what we really need to do with the low bid.
Okay. Has this MJS done any of the other phases?
No. The two other contractors previously did not meet certification on this round. We went with a D-CAM certification this time around, for a little bit more protection for the town, and neither one of those were D-CAM certified, so they did a bid.
D-CAM certification gives you a little bit more knowledge that the contractor will have the qualifications to do the bids, to do the contract. This particular contractor has done restoration work that I did do reference checks on, and he passed the state Mass Historical Commission recommendation, so they obviously know him from doing some restoration work as well. So, he is qualified, and the state feels he's qualified, so...
And the matching funds are coming from Community Preservation, perhaps?
Yes.
Because we voted that up?
Yep, yep, the matching funds are coming from...
Clear for the public.
Yes, the matching funds are coming from the CPA, and the other half is coming from the Mass Historical Commission on a state level.
And the contract needs to be signed by the chairman of, just the chairman?
Yes.
I don't remember what I saw, so I make a motion to award the Phase 3 Tomb Restoration contract to MJS Construction for $99,420, with the contract being signed by the chairman of the board. Thanks for all your work.
A motion, a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion concerning the tomb restoration project? See none, John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Good job, Alan.
Thank you very much.
Was Mayor Hawke scheduled to be here?
He was not.
Okay, so money tax district agreement, are you talking about that?
Sure, I mean, in simplest terms, if you had a chance to go through the mayor's
Yep.
letter at some length, this is a relatively old contract, a district agreement. There are a number of amendments that have been made that really are out of step, and a number of amendments that are needed. While he didn't cite it specifically, certainly a amendment that required a preliminary budget by, let's say, February 15, and a final budget by March 15, would allow communities much more information in terms of planning their budget.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I certainly understand what the mayor is suggesting, and I would respectfully request that this board authorize the, the chair or the entirety of the board to sign a letter in support of a review of the current district agreement with an idea towards modernizing and needed amendments.
I think this is long overdue.
Uh, yes.
I think that, I also saw, I also read an article in the newspaper about other communities, I, I don't, I think that was written by Christine, about other communities that are supporting this, and I back this wholeheartedly. I would, I would like to see, just for consistency's sake and for, you know, in support of it, to see the whole board sign a letter in support to, and that would be drafted to Mayor, to Mayor Hawke, or would it be drafted to?
Well, my suggestion would be that it be drafted to the district with a copy to Mayor Hawke. Certainly, we could do that. I can reach out to the mayor's office and see if he's assembling these things.
Right.
We can do it in whatever seems to be the best way.
Okay. I don't know what kind of motion you would like, or just a general consensus that we...
Memo's to be completed and...
I support that.
Send it to the district and CC Mayor Hawke, I guess. Actually, we could probably CC the entire, all the communities that are involved.
Yeah, everything that he, there's a whole list here of...
That way, we show this, we, we as a board who's had that signed, show support.
I think that the mayor initiated this, is, was my understanding from the newspaper article.
Yes.
Over, I, I've been having discussions with the mayor on this issue for, probably five or six years ago, we started discussing it.
Right.
And the issue being is that the regional agreement was developed and signed in 1965. It doesn't reflect today's, it doesn't reflect the change of, from calendar year to fiscal year budgets, it doesn't reflect issues involving it reform. So, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at. The other thing from a Templeton, I think, standpoint is in terms of representation on the school committee. We, we have, I don't know, over 100 students there.
Ninety-one, to be exact.
Well, all right, we have 91.
Yep.
Royalston has one. We each have one, one, one member to the, to the, the school committee. So, I mean, we're not getting our fair representation.
And the other thing is, the amount of students that each community has is a number, like Templeton's 33 a year. This year, this past year, we only, there was only 30 that went. So, do we get credit for the other three, because they went to other communities to get those other three seats filled? I don't know, these are questions that I had as well. So, I agree with you, and I agree with Diane, that this stuff where it needs to be reviewed and looked at closer.
It's my understanding that there's, I don't know, 10 communities or 12 communities or even more, and it extends all the way out to Harvard. So, what happens is, let's say Harvard's allotted 10 slots, and, you know, New Yorkans, it's allotted 30. If Harvard chooses to only, you know, do one, then they pick from other communities, and we might, you know, they might take nine more students of ours, plus some, you know. And I'm not saying that that's, you know, not a good thing to do, because there's definitely a need for vocation, for a vocational school, but in here, it talks about that, like, helping to fix that part of the agreement, you know, and it's definitely antiquated, so I think it's a good thing it's finally being recognized.
Seventeen communities.
Seventeen communities.
Yeah, I couldn't remember, sorry, just off the top of my head, but...
Thanks, John, so I think we're all in agreement. So, do a memo to the district, CC all the people on this list, signed off by the entire board.
Saying that, we support the district agreement. Actually, they want to create a committee from members outside the district school committee to review, update, and revise the district agreement. So, just so everybody's clear, they're gonna create a committee that has nothing to do with the people that are actually in it, so that there's an unbiased look.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Which is the best way to do business.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'll do a motion after second.
Well, I didn't, did I make a, I didn't really make a motion. I just wasn't sure what you wanted, and you kind of said, okay, well, there's your motion.
Right, that's what I figured. I have a motion after second. Motion second, any discussion concerning, uh, Monty Tech? I see none, John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, and... Action on policy, reduction and control of the cost of employees' benefits. Mr. Tendini?
Yes, this is, um, was distributed maybe one or two business meetings ago. We spent a part of the last workshop reviewing it. The change has been made to Section Three Administration to remove references to staff other than the town administrator, and that can be covered by the fact that he can delegate the responsibility to people who fill out those roles, depending upon the organizational structure at that point in time. On page two, we made an adjustment to five A Roman two, so that the enrollment is the first of the month after their completion of one full calendar month of service. So if they're appointed on the second of April, if they've got partial, they go through May, then they go on in June. So that's going to be anywhere from thirty-two days to, um, you know, sixty-one. We will have to be careful because if the ACA stays in place, it's not supposed to go more than sixty. So as long as you're careful with your date of appointments, um, to make sure that somebody doesn't start, you know, on the sixty-first day, you'll, you'll be fine. That's just, I think, a mechanics issue. And on the third page, uh, because the, the adoption, the cut and paste, uh, adoption and effective date, that they sort of flow together, so we just took the adoption out to leave the effective date in, um, which would be with your adoption. And I think those are all the things that we spoke of the other...
Can you just address where we talked about the whole, you know, forty, thirty-eight hour thing? Were you able to come up with a way to...
I wasn't...
I just feel like we're, you know, if we ever wanted to change that, I mean, do we, first, we have to change the policy and then, you know?
Yeah, I, I think...
Were you able to come up with anything?
I wasn't able to really come up with any good verbal that didn't defeat what we were trying to control on the other side. So I'm afraid at this point, this was the best I could do, and if you do change these, I think that you'll need to amend this policy.
John?
Yes, John?
Um, on page three...
Yeah.
Number six.
Mm-hmm.
Second sentence, "Any employee found falsifying documentation to qualify for the opt-out payment shall be subject to discipline, up to and including discipline."
Oh, termination.
Didn't even know, there's a redundancy.
Yeah, if there's a redundancy, we can fix that. Up to and including dismissal.
I got you.
You have the thing.
Uh-huh.
What do you all say?
I believe so.
I make a motion to approve policy statement number twenty seventeen dash oh-one, reduction and control of the cost of employee benefits, subject to this change of page three, number six, instead of discipline dismissal, to be signed by...
Does it have to be signed?
Um, yes, usually I suggest that they be signed.
Do you have a motion after a second?
One second.
Okay, motion second, any discussion concerning this policy? I see none. John?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Presentation regarding the FY fifteen OPEB general and sewer funds?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was working on that with the auditor today. Something didn't look a hundred percent right over the weekend, so I'm withdrawing these two until the auditor and I can complete our review. The, the sewer fund looks right, but something doesn't just, something just doesn't look quite right on the others, so I'm withdrawing that at this point.
Are you doing G-N-H or just G?
Uh, just GH we can speak to.
Okay. So we're withdrawing, or are we gonna put that for...
I'll, I'll schedule G after the auditor and I have finished it, and we've talked with the software developer.
Okay.
Um, like I say, the sewer looked fine, but something's just, just not feeling right on the general fund.
Understood. Okay, um, great. Action, uh, the MFOB application?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we've talked about this a little bit. Talked about it in the workshop. We talked about it after the MFOB meeting, and the application for guaranteed State Bond Act authorization has two elements to it. The first is completed financials, and as we described to you last week, and the auditors in fact are here today, um, they may even still be here, I don't know...
They are.
...tonight. And they'll be here this week. It seems to be going well in this first day. So I think that on March eighth, we certainly would be able to meet our pledge to return with a much clearer financial picture. The second test is that of debt coverage. The MFOB, though it is not specified in the statute, uh, the Department of Revenue has applied their analysis in a manner in which they look at all of your debt service, and then they look at the state aid. And you must have sufficient, more state aid than you have debt service. Unfortunately, that is not the case here. And while we made the argument previously that with the exception of a hundred and forty thousand dollar payment next year, almost all of the debt is enterprise fund, utility related. And, um, we have spent time with bond counsel, with the financial advisor, trying to find some way to structure the school note and find some way through the statute, and we were unable to do so. So in my conversation with Mary Jane Handy, after I brought her up to speed on the status of our financial review, I said to her, you know, um, I, I'm just, we're never going to pass the second test unless you interpret this rule differently. And I have to think about suggesting to, to you all and to the board that to have town representatives travel down and to have you all take time out of your day to get to the meeting, sit through the meeting, and get back to your offices, I really have to question if that's a good investment of, should we take that time up that you put into these efforts? And she essentially suggested, well, not essentially, she outright suggested that we withdraw the application because we were not going to be able to meet the second test. So, uh, you know, we have Plan B and we have Plan C, but it is clear to me, at least, that Plan A is, is not going to work here. And I reluctantly suggest to you that we withdraw the MFOB application for authorization of a guaranteed state bond.
Thank you. Hi, Diane. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Doug, please.
No, I was just, you know, it, it just concerns me a little about withdrawing the application. I mean, granted, we may not be successful, and yes, it's an uphill battle to try to be successful. However, it, withdrawing just gives, you know, Templeton has our reputation from our, you know, financial troubles, and by just withdrawing, it adds to, well, they're not even going to try. You know, to me, even if we fail, making the effort to say, this is what we've done, this is where we've gone, and continue to make the argument about the enterprise funds, granted, they didn't accept it last time, but it's a good argument to make. So it, it just concerns me that we're going to with, just withdraw. You know, I, I think that would leave in the, you know, I mean, I know we're a very small cog in the whole government wheel, but I just think it gives a bad impression of Templeton to withdraw.
Okay. Thanks, Diane.
Well, I, you want, you know, kind of go back and forth about this. So my first question is, I, I agree with you, but I think it's, um, I think I said this at the workshop, is this an exercise in futility, and we're going to have them, you know, sit before the board and meeting the board, you know, the MFOB will be there, and do we just, um, do we just move on to Plan B? I don't, I, I don't think by any stretch of the means that we haven't, um, in good faith, taken every step that, that we should, and that's from the very beginning. But when we first talked about going before the MFOB, there was no way, like, because it's because of how they are interpreting, so the MFOB says one thing and the DOR says something else, and they're going to, you know, the, their statutes clash? And it's just, this is the way that, I mean, the fact that Mary Jane Handy is saying to us, we should withdraw, I think that that says something, but I don't understand, like, why weeks ago we didn't understand, yes, thank God, the books are going to be done. That's incredible. We've gotten more done in less than six months with the new auditors than we have in a year. But I don't know why we didn't under, like, how could that have changed?
So the MFOB, at first, the statute is not specific on this interpretation. It's, there's no requirement for this in the statute. The MFOB relies upon the advice of DOR with respect to the financial condition of the community. The other members are the Attorney General's Office, is this following the statute? The Treasurer's Office, is this going to be consistent with statute? And the Auditor's Office. So they look to DOR for that financial analysis. And it is unfortunate on the application, I mean, I personally would love to see them add to the application, how much is your total current debt, attach a schedule, box A. What is your local aid, box B? If box B exceeds box A...
It don't apply.
Well, you can apply if, but if box A is bigger than box B, please don't send this in. I mean, it really would be nice if they boiled it down, but they don't, and they didn't inform us of that until the representative of DOR went to present his analysis. They will follow the, this is the way that they have, to my understanding, reviewed all of these applications. I believe it's the way they will continue to review them. And what they did was give us the, the six weeks, in part because they knew that that would help keep the pressure on the auditors, poor Kelly, everybody else. In fact, one of the guys said, so I think you're asking for this extension in part to help keep the pressure on everybody, and I said yes. But also, we were going to try to, you know, look at was there a way to restructure something in some way to meet their concerns. So it's, it's your judgment call. I'm relaying the, the conversation and the, you know, as, as best I think I can. I, I think I've done it accurately. And at the end of the day, it's, it's your judgment call whether or not to send that contingent down to stand in front of those folks again. And, um, in any event, I've, I've told Mary Jane that whether we send a contingent down or not, you know, mid to later this month, we will schedule a, a working session with them with what we have of the financials at that point in time, which she seemed to, to appreciate.
Good. Good. Julie, I don't know. John, you got it?
Um, I just, uh, I'm really conflicted on this. I think that Doug has a good point, and I just disappointed that the efforts that have been made to right the ship here are not being recognized.
I think I'm, I personally am leaning towards withdrawal, and not, not to say that, but we've made the efforts, and they're saying that, you know, we, we talked about this at the workshop, I know you guys weren't there, and to really, you know, Carter made that phone call to Mary Carney as well.
And Mary Carney as well.
And Mary Ja, so there's, they're saying there's no workaround to that because of how the interpretations are. So, you know, I think that we have to move to Plan B and get going on that. The larger risk is, you know, will we lose the MSBA funding? And that's really, um, that has to be, that's a priority.
Yes.
Whether we do that, you know, whether they'll put it on hold or whether, you know, I don't know. Personally, I would make a motion to accept, or to, to withdraw from going to the Municipal Finance Oversight Board on March eighth.
I'm going to agree with Diane on that. I'll second that.
A motion second, any discussion? Yes.
What is wrong with you people? If this was a house, wouldn't you tell your buyers to apply because you don't know what's happening? If this was a child, wouldn't you say you've got to give it all, give it your all? Is this going to hurt our, our reputation to not try? I mean, come on, you guys, and what about all the work that she's put into this and everyone else? Let's just put her up here in public and strip her down and give her a slap in the face. Here we are again, rolling over and playing dead. As a citizen, you guys suck.
Hmm. Thank you.
Can I speak to that?
Go ahead, yes, I, I can't at this point, because...
So let me just say that, because you spoke about houses, and obviously, I used to do a financial piece of it. When someone comes to me personally, and we can, I'm not a financier piece of it anymore, I'm going to buy a house, but when they kind of start giving me the indication that things aren't going to work, and then I call the lender and we kind of talk about that together, it's pretty much decided that, no, you probably shouldn't apply right now because X, X, and X, which is basically what Mary Jane Handy just said. They went before them, they said you have to meet this test, this test, and this test, and we're going to, never going to meet test number two. However, you know, Kelly and Steph have done an amazing job of getting the books done, so it's not about stripping her down and, you know, I mean, I was here on Sunday helping out too, and it's a matter of that piece needed to be get done, and that's the push that we got to finish that. And I think that that push had already been started, but when you recreate books, and that's not going to change our debt service, and it's not going to change, you know, what the statute says. So it's not giving up. It's a matter of now we have to focus on, on the next, you know, piece of it. And if I can, John, I would like to speak to some other things that I've either seen written or have been said to me. We, in good faith, when we fought for the school, and the voters voted and said yes, the presentations that were made were done in good faith. We did not violate anything to do with consumer protection or anything else of that nature. We did that in good faith. The information that we had was that the books would be done by this date, the books would be done by that date. We didn't know...
We did not violate anything to do with consumer protection or anything else of that nature. We did that in good faith. The information that we had was that the books would be done by this date, the books would be done by that date. We didn't know where things were gonna be, but the public was well aware of where we were. And we are still standing, I am, I cannot speak for the rest of the board. I am still standing here in agreement that we need a school. Some of you say that now is not the time, then you voted no. Some of you say now is the time. The books will be done, the audit will be there, a management letter will be here. And then we need to go out and we need to borrow. We don't have to borrow, you know, 25 million or 47 million right away. We need to borrow because we get reimbursements from the MSBA. And hardly that has been happening, correct? We send in a bill, we get reimbursement. We send in a bill, we get reimbursement. Are things a big rosy picture? No. But I'm really tired of hearing like half truths and half. We as a board voted in good faith to move forward with the project. And everybody knew where we would be at. Did we know perfectly where it would be? Do we know exactly what? No, we still don't know, we're waiting. But to kind of just say, we didn't do this and we didn't do that is wrong. Cause we have an accounting staff and a financial staff that have busted their butt to get where we are today. And they need to be thanked. So I would really appreciate that instead of all the negativity. And to please call us and talk to us, and we'll point you in the right direction.
Thanks Diane. Yes.
Two, two, two questions.
Two questions. Question one.
Question one is what, which enterprise funds are negatively affecting this? And is there something, and part of, that's still part of the same question.
Yep.
What could the town have done differently in the past to not be in the situation? That, that's question number one. Question number two, if I understand Mr. Tenzina correctly, that it is an interpretation. And it's not the, the, it's not in the statute. If it's not in the statute, my, and, and I'm speaking as a taxpayer. I was on the original committee to try to get the school put in place, alright? Um, if it's not in the statute, then we, we have a leg to stand on because it's an interpretation. And for, for you not to move forward with it, I think it is, um, not the best choice for being able to look at every avenue. You're just going, well, somebody's interpretation says A. And push it to get the B interpretation if it's not in the statute.
Okay.
Those are my two questions.
Uh, the first one is all of the enterprise fund debt between both Light, Water, and Sewer, collectively as a whole, affects the overall debt management process of the town's debt. Even though the enterprise funds pay their responsibilities of their debt, the town is still ultimately responsible. So we are still held as like a, like a cosigner. So we're, it's still held, we're still held accountable as a town.
So moving forward, we should no longer cosign those types of things?
We have no choice. By law, we have to. We have to, by law.
Okay.
Uh, second part, second part of your question is, again, Master of Law, the statute's very specific with that. They have to come to us, Light, Water, Sewer, they have to come through us, kinda like what they've been doing. Uh, in order to obtain either MS, you know, whatever loans that they need to get through the USDA or wherever. But we need to be part of that process because if they default, which I know they won't, then the town becomes then liable and responsible. Uh, and that's what the law says. Now, as far as your second question concerning, um.
The interpretation of the statute that, that.
It's not only the interpretation of stat- cause I was there at the meeting. It wasn't just also the interpretation of statute as they have common practice. This is what they've always done since they started this MFOB process. Uh, so that's what, that's what we were told. Uh, I did ask Mr. Tenzina to reach out to legal concerning this, or not so much legal, but was it bond counsel?
Bond counsel.
Uh, just to confirm, you know, this, this doesn't seem right to me. It doesn't smell right to me. I said, can you just go to bond counsel and see if it's not in the statute, how can they do this? And they came back and they gave us, you know, through what the DOR said was they have the right to process the way they process. And if they, if it doesn't meet their standards, it's not gonna be approved, period. That was the end of the story. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tenzina.
No, that's exactly right.
So basically, to, to someone else differently, John.
Yeah.
Um, somebody, someplace along the way made something common practice that's not in the law. That's what you're telling me.
I don't, I don't think it was along the way. I think it was when the MF, from what I understand.
No, wherever it was in the process, saying it's common practice, if it's not in the law, then it, it, I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So, um, common sense tells me that if it's not in the law, whether it's common practice or not, you should still push forward on it because it's not in the statute. It's not part of the law.
I know. And I understand that, I, I think.
And that, and I'll be quiet.
No, that's okay. I think, I think it's important for the people to understand, no, I mean, it's, we're doing what we can do. We're, we're all supporting what, what he. I was at that meeting, I was, I was at that meeting. I pretty much told that board that it would be catastrophic to this community to not have a school here. Uh, there's no school. Um, you know, we, I gave them the dynamics of where we are right now with the amount of kids that we have in this community that need to be schooled. Uh, the fact that the Master of Law says that we are mandated by law to give them a school. That's what the law said. And if we, we have to give them a school. Uh, bad things can happen to the town if we don't fulfill the obligation of providing a, an accurate place for these kids to go to school. Uh, I don't know what those bad things are, but I'm sure that, I'm sure the state can, uh, do some bad things to a community if we don't fulfill our obligation to the community with a school. Uh, unless you have anything to add, I, I'm, I'm at a loss because I can't. I mean, bottom line upfront is, I mean, they're not gonna approve it.
Let me just say that statutes are often a big umbrella. And then how they actually get implemented is driven by regulation and policies. That these agencies develop. And, you know, we've been told flat out, when you look at test number two, it's not gonna get approved. And it's been recommended by the agency that would have to waiver on their interpretation. They've recommended that we withdraw it. So, um, you know, you can push forward. Um, and you can think of how that gets viewed. Uh, and then you can think about spending another hour in front of the representative of the treasurer, AG's office, auditor's office, DOR, with perhaps a big question mark over their head of, why are these people here? This is not realistic.
Because it's not in the statute. And if it's not in the statute, if you don't push forward for it and get the denial, then you have no standing in a court, in a court to be able to do anything further. Gave up. And that, and that's my only point. And it's, it's up to the board to do whatever they decide to do.
It's, it's up, it's up to the board. It's.
Thank you.
Their decision of what reality is.
Liz Toth.
Liz, what?
Toth, T-O-T-H.
T-O-T-H.
Yes, Tom.
John, I have a question.
Sure.
If you, if you withdraw now, now you can start the process of Plan B.
Yes.
So if you don't withdraw and you have to go.
March eighth.
Then you're talking about wasting eight more days.
Yes, exactly.
So you can start Plan B now and start looking in a Plan B instead of wasting because who knows how long that they're going to, um, hold your money for the school.
No, March eighth, they'll tell us on that.
Well, that, well, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Why not withdraw now and then go, you know, start your Plan B?
Well, cause a lot of things, that's a good point. I mean, there's a lot of things we have to work out because.
So we can focus on Plan B.
Right.
Or Plan C. And I really, you know, no one's fought harder, um, between a board member and a constituent, um, for the school. And I'm sorry if you think that, you know, my personal, again, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board because I've not voted that, we haven't tried our best concerted effort, you know, to move forward. I wasn't able to go, um, to that meeting, but I've obviously spoken to the people that are there. And yeah, it's a little bit disappointing. And that's why I asked the question like, well, would we have known this ahead of time? No. Because now they're saying, and the DOR is well aware of where our town is at, um, cause they've been here. So, you know, for me, it's, it's, I want to focus on the next step and what that would be. And having, you know, the school obviously, um, has to be involved in that. And there needs to be some, you know, community outreach and community forums. Cause of course, you're all gonna be, oh my God, what's gonna happen? You know, so we need to be very clear about that. But there's two sides to every coin. And, you know, I still fully support this.
What is, is Plan B? What is the, I'm sorry, John.
That's okay.
What is Plan B? Um, what is the percent, what would the board give as percentage likelihood of Plan B being successful?
I, I didn't hear.
What's the percentage of likelihood of being successful? Well, once, once we get bond counsel involved, we have our good numbers and we can go out to borrow, excuse me, ourselves, that would be Plan B.
So she's asking what is the likelihood that we would be, um, successful, but we need the audits finished first? Which will be when?
They'll be finished with all of their field work this week. So potentially, we could have, within the next six weeks, they would have everything done and ready to present.
But I can guarantee you that nobody's like sitting still. And I'm certain that the MSBA will be the next phone call if they haven't been contacted already. Um, you know, I mean, I'm not involved in every, um, conversation, but of course, they have to be involved. I've spoken to the OPM. We had a, you know, a first, um, elementary school building committee meeting because everything, um, had been on hold. And we were saying the same thing, like what happens if, you know, this whole thing doesn't work out? Do we still go ahead? And do we, you know, we gotta move on. We gotta move to our next step of action. It's not moving on, what's the next action step? And that we can, you know, eight days is a long time to wait. And people are just, you know, the MSBA wants to know what we're doing. The DOR wants to know what we're doing. Everybody wants to know what we're doing. I personally just don't wanna delay that any longer.
Just don't wanna hear we get to the end of Plan B and find out, oh, that's not gonna work. And Plan C and Plan D and, you know, there's a whole bunch of letters in the alphabet.
There is.
You know, just, I realize you guys are doing the best you can. And, and appreciate that. It's, it's just trying to get us moving along.
Get it.
One other thing that you need to understand too is, is, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a public relations thing as far as, you know, government versus local population and towns folks. And there's, there's a PR thing here that people don't get. I mean, they get it in social media. I see it all the time. They, they talk about John Capless have an agenda. I love it. I do have an agenda. I'll talk about that in a second. But, um, but they talk about like crazy things. And it's like, well, you know what? We're trying to do what we can for the community. But when you, if we go to a meeting on the eighth and we get denied, what do you think for me? The front page of the God News, I'm not talking the crease, I'm talking top shelf. Right Christine?
You're already gonna be there.
Templeton denied. That's what it will say. State denied Templeton. That's what it will say. So do we have a choice or an obligation to, to, to defeat that by withdrawing our application, which might be below the crease on the second page maybe? Or maybe not?
Probably.
Probably not.
Probably.
But at least, at least we have the opportunity to drive our own destiny here within the town of Templeton where we're not really, um, where the public relations really, that's not gonna hit us that high. Because it's gonna be, we're not gonna get approved.
Well, instead of denied, it's gonna say gave up.
No, no, it's not, no.
And I would hope not.
No, we didn't give up. There's, there's no give up.
Why wouldn't it?
Well, well, because, I mean, at the end of the day, if you go, it's gonna be, it's gonna say denied. And we talked about legal action, there's really no, there's, trying to fight city halls is really tough today. And that's pretty much what you have to do if you go to the state house. You start, you know, you know, banging on doors and trying to fight them with, uh, legal courses of action, which you're really not gonna get for, except suck a lot of the money of taxpayers into le- legal fees that, that at the end of the day, they're gonna, they're gonna agree with the Department of Revenue who told you to pull out to begin with. So it doesn't make any sense. You have to have commonality, common sense when it comes to like these decision-making processes. So it's not just about the first move you make. What's the next, the sixth move down the ride you're gonna make? Cause that's what's important. How is it gonna affect the community when they start reading stuff in the papers and social media that, you know, yeah, Templeton, you know, state denied Templeton, oh, that's, that's great. Versus, you know, we as a board have to make a decision to either withdraw and, and hold our heads up high and look at Plan B and start looking forward to building a new school, working with the MSBA. Uh, so this can happen. This can come to some type of realism. But I, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that you, it's a balancing act that you have to balance. And it's, and it's one of those balancing acts. And that's pretty much where we're at. Jeff, you have something to say? Okay, you're good?
I'll just listen.
Okay, good.
Nothing.
Okay, uh, any other, anything else concerning this? Anything else? I can't see any. So you, you make a motion?
I believe I did.
I believe you did too.
Got a second.
Julie, second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion concerning, uh, the withdrawal from the MFOB? Yes, John.
I just got a quick question.
Yes.
So the DOR is not an elected body, you're appointed.
Right.
Okay, so they don't promulgate laws or regulations. They issue guidelines and.
Yes.
No one ever went to jail for not following a guideline. God knows Light Department has not followed any DOR guidelines.
I understand.
And there's been some really, some really terrible ones.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make an analogy, I don't know if it's valid or not, but we've been, um, we're a member of an organization called MEME. Light Departments are an organization called MEME. It's the Municipal Electra- Electrical Association of Mass.
Right.
We've been on, on opposite sides with the Mass DEP for probably going on seven years now with clean energy standards. And they've said repeatedly, we want you to do this, we would like you to do this, we would feel better if you did this. But we've repeatedly told them that you have no authority to make us do this. You know, we're under 164 and they can recommend all they want.
Right.
But it's, it's the laws that govern the town, just like the laws govern the Light Department. I mean, so there's been, it sounds like there's been no, um, there's been, there've been no pushback at all? Like has anyone said?
Oh, there's been pushback.
I appreciate your opinion.
Oh, there's been pushback.
Well, I, I just mean, has anyone said, I appreciate your input, DOR? But I'd just assume like to hear with somebody who maybe passed the bar?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Cause it can make a difference.
There is.
I think that you need to understand how the MFOB works. There are four members, a state auditor or, or designee, the representative from the state treasurer's office, representative from the Attorney General's office, and a representative from the DOR. And they vote collectively and they have sole discretion as to whom to authorize, to issue a state guaranteed bond. And they will follow the guidance of DOR.
And just so you know, it wasn't, we, we originally went in looking for the 24 to 27 million as a, as a band. Uh, but the way that statute is written, it has to be for the entire amount of money of 47 million. So that 47 million plus the enterprise fund debt, plus the $140,000 left for the school, added all that up, based on our state aid, we wouldn't be, we, they would, we wouldn't be able to make the bill. That's how they come down to the decision-making process. So if your state aid, if you get enough state aid to, to beach your, your amount to pay, you know, your bill, then you're fine. If you, your state aid is way short, then that's when, that's when the state says, no, you can't, you can't get any money from us.
And the challenge for this community is that you are in a school district. So if you were a Winchendon, your 12 million dollars, give or take of chapter 70 would flow to you, plus your 2 million dollars, give or take of unrestricted local government aid, or 14 million. So you would take that 14 million, you'd compare it to the debt payments of roughly 1.3 million this year. Um, and add 1.5, let's say for the bond. So you'd have 3 million in debt and 14 million in revenue. But here, you're a member of a school district. So all of that chapter 78 goes directly to the school. So you can't use it in the ratio at all.
Which that's our other problem, we couldn't use that.
Okay, and what, what was the March eighth date signify?
That was the re, um, re-meeting with the MFOB at the state house with all those folks.
Who, who met with them the first time? Did you guys meet with them once already or?
We have.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Tenzina, myself, the, the auditors, um.
The treasurer.
Treasurer, the superintendent of the schools.
Member of the advisory committee.
Project manager. And I believe the vice chairman of the building committee was there, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, yeah. So it was a pretty good, large group.
Along with some members of the public.
Yeah, plus members of the public went. It's an open meeting, so, uh, members of the advisory committee went. Uh, Christine was there. She sat right behind.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little concerned that, uh, that, that the, the nature of Light and Water Department would probably not explain to the extent that it exists. Cause there's no other light, there's no other water department in Mass like this one, obviously, for my special legislation. I don't, to me, that should have granted some kind of leeway on, but, but they would normally lump all the debt together. Uh, to me, the, the Light Department and the 164, even if the selectmen and the commissioners were the same people, that, that, that number still shouldn't affect the debt ceiling. But that's, that's a debate I've been having for years.
That's a whole, that's, that's a whole nother dish, that's a whole different story, yeah.
Debt ceiling's another.
That's a whole nother.
This is debt coverage ratio. This is debt coverage ratio.
Oh, okay, okay.
This, this doesn't affect our debt ceiling, your debt doesn't affect our town debt ceiling, but it affects our debt ratio.
Debt coverage.
Right. Right. Thank you, though. Anything, anything else, I got a motion and a second?
I think the land had...
Well, John had just talked, because, just so everybody knows, it's like you guys say, you're not giving up on the March 8th meeting. Your debt is too big right now, and to incur another $47 million, the town cannot, doesn't have the money to put up to pay the debt. That's the ultimate thing, and that's just what the state just told them. You have debt now, and you wanna incur another 47 million, the money's not there. You can take all your state aid, you could take your savings funds, you could take everything else you have in town, but it's ultimately not gonna be able to pay the bill. So the state obviously isn't gonna give you the money, because you can't guarantee you're gonna do it. It's like going to the bank and asking to buy something, and you have no savings account, and they're gonna say, yeah, sure, you can have it. So they're not giving up on it, there's no other choice, they're not gonna get the funding. So to move on is the best decision to do, go to the next plan.
So let me just clarify that a little bit, and I get what you're saying, but it's not 47 million, it's, that's what they, that's what they are looking at, not what we, because, okay, I'm not gonna remember, like, numbers, it's 25 million or whatever, you know, that we're gonna have to go out for, and to do our own borrowing, we have to, it's gonna be on the, on tax rate, and it's gonna be, but you can't do that until you borrow, so, and we, we shouldn't borrow until we, you know, now we can't until we have our books done. And so, again, that piece of it is really good, even though it's disappointing, but no, we're not giving up. We shouldn't give up. Why would we do that? Or I, sorry, not we, sorry, you know, I can't speak for everybody else.
Right, I got you.
I hope, I hope that the entire board supports this project, we voted before, it was unanimous, so, you know...
We're strong advocates. All right, so I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Thanks, Ellen. Yes?
Not to beat a dead horse, but if you go back and look at the town meeting vote for the school...
Yes.
The town voted to borrow 47 million dollars.
Yes.
That's what you're on the hook for, it doesn't matter if you're only gonna borrow, you're on the, you're authorized to borrow 47 million.
Understood.
And the M S B A grant is, it states in there, and on their website, and in the code of mass regulations, it's a non-entitlement grant, meaning they don't have to give you 22.9, they can give you whatever they decide.
Understood.
And with regards to the light and water department, there was a letter sent from the Department of Revenue to the town of Templeton in January of 2014, that clearly states they are not a legal separate entity with regards to borrowing, so that's why they had to go to town meeting to borrow money, and if you look at all of the town meeting votes to borrow money for the light or the water, it says in the broad, the last line or close to it, the town is ultimately responsible for all those loans, which is why the Department of Revenue...
That's right.
...counts all of that debt against us.
That's right.
It's not that the town of Templeton has to get it out of the real estate tax, but we're ultimately on the hook for it.
Understood.
So they're basically telling you, you shouldn't buy, have the mortgage that you really can't afford to pay for, as, as they're looking at it.
Understood, and that's...
I just...
No, I got you. Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? I have a motion and a second, any other discussion concerning this? Again, this is to withdraw, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That was a motion to withdraw from the M F O B. Motion and a second, any other discussion again? None. John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
I mean, I am for the project, and, you know, we do have to move forward. The, the discussion that we've had here has been very good, and I appreciate that discussion. And I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay. I vote yes as well. Mr. Tenzini, can you draft up the, the letter for the withdrawal?
I will.
I'm just gonna sign that letter.
I agree.
Can you...
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Send you off.
Action on 504 pages, retain for parking and burial ground. Mr. Mayo, we got some more information concerning the, the old gas station, I guess?
I actually do not have any more information.
Okay.
At this point, there was concern about the fact that at the last meeting, that there couldn't be tanks still in the ground, nobody seems to know that at this point, so I don't know if the board would want to table this until we do some more research on that property.
Well, with respect to that question...
Yes.
Let me say that, as I think I informed you, that in the normal course of events, even when this station was abandoned, the tanks either should have been removed and inspected, or back then, you were permitted to fill the tanks with, with a flowable material, sand, ground, cement, different things.
I, I, although that's the case...
There's no record at the fire station as to whether or not that ever happened, so you, it's on the tax rules, but you've not gone through the process for closing it for the land court, through land court. And do please bear in mind that once you, one, you don't have responsibility, you have protections under 21E, because you were not the potentially responsible party who, during the time that this was in operations, and that as having it on the tax duty list, you are, in fact, potentially responsible for any attractive nuisance. So if you don't want to move forward, then we would simply, we should get it boarded up and inform the tax, the treasurer collector to expend their tax dollars on other properties. If you think this is a property that you want to try to do something with in some fashion, whether it's retain it, or proceed with the 21E, and, you know, look towards getting it disposed of, then I would suggest that we instruct the treasurer collector to move this property to land court. And then you can deal with CPA for 21E, because I think this development of this has some potentially fundable opportunities under the Community Preservation Act. So it's either, well, we need to at least get the thing foreclosed, so we can start to deal with it, it's an option, or, eh, let's just board it up and spend our energy on other properties.
Okay.
And those really are the options of the moment, neither one of them commits you to keeping it as a town property, but it does kind of start to move you forward in some direction.
Okay.
My motion?
Yes, I would, I would like to...
You know what, I like the idea, everything that I read, I brought up most of the concerns, and I think that about $25,000, is that correct, is owed on this property, and I apologize for not bringing my notes with me, because I know I had other questions besides just the 21E, but I think it's, I've gone back and forth in my head about this, I would love to see better access to the cemetery back there, especially where we've done a lot of the tomb restoration, we can foreclose. I'm not sure, you know, is it commercial property right now, or is it residential? Do you, Luann, can you tell me that? Did I...
It's classified as commercial, so as far as zoning...
And how, how much land was, half an acre?
I think it's under a half, yeah.
Okay, so it'd be grandfathered in for somebody to put something there, because right now we have to have an acre, and you have to have 150 feet of frontage, and you have to have, and we don't have that there, so... I just think it makes more sense to, you know, move forward and see, you know, what we can do, if the funds are available, through the CPA, to do a 21E. I guess, you know, if we do find out that there's something there, who pays for the cleanup? So let me ask, who pays for the cleanup? Us?
Well, if...
That would be a little scary.
Well, I mean, 21E is done in several sta, stages, so you'd have to get first the phase one, and potential cleanups, depending upon the reuse, can be funded through CPA, or if it's going to be reused for economic development, often EPA will offer consortium grants through the regional planning agencies, and brownfields money can clean sites like this.
And I think the major...
Let me just say, there's a long time between here and, and there, if this is something you wanna pursue, to at least bring it to some sort of closure, whether it's keep it for yourselves, or spin it up, this is gonna be a five-year, give or take slog.
And I think the major design was more for parking, correct?
That was for parking, and at that, as I spoke last meeting, at the, at the time when we did the preservation plan for the burial ground, that was one of the big notations in the preservation plan, was that that building was an eyesore for that particular national historic site. So I'm not gonna rule out that Mass Historical may do something with, you know, assisting in, in this process, too. I would have to reach out to them and see what they could do as well.
Right.
They were the ones that recommended originally that that would be nice, if the town could make that building disappear. It's an eyesore, it's, it's too modern for the time period in that area, and it, and it really takes away from your burial ground and, and your natural historic comments, so...
Okay, so, did you make your motion?
Well, not quite yet, so, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm a little bit confused about this. So I just would want to be clear, that I don't know a commercial property, I don't really, I've read 21Es, but it's not my forte. So if we went through a phase one of it, and we figured out that there did, there were still tanks there, and I just, we're not on the hook to, to do that, or because we said we were gonna move forward, we are, I mean, I've heard that it can cost hundreds of thousands to do cleanup, and we don't have that, so...
And it can cost often zero.
Okay, I would like to look at worst-case scenario, please.
Well, you gotta look at the ranges.
Okay, it might cost zero, let's move back, you gotta look...
Look at the ranges, I mean, step one here truly is, if you think this is a property that you want to either keep or attempt to dispose of, you really need to tell the treasurer collector that this is a, a property of some real interest to you, and move it forward to land court, because that's a 18-month plus or minus process by itself.
Yep.
Assuming you did the taking correctly, and everything lines up. We already have what, I, I can't remember now, I think 12 out of 20 parcels in American tissue have to go back to land court, because the taking wasn't done correctly.
Okay.
It's not a fault blame thing, it's just a reality.
I, I would make a motion that we should move forward with foreclosing, or having the treasurer...
Forclosing the right of redemption.
Foreclosing with the right of redemption.
Okay, to land court. Okay.
Thanks, Ellen.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion concerning this? I see none. John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Ellen, again. Action on opioid-related issues, Selecton Richard?
Yes, I asked this to come on, because for, over the past year, or even more, actually, we've all heard the stories about the opioid problem in our nation, as well as several stories about the increasing use of drugs here in our area. So I'd like to request this item, so that we might ask our police chief to put together a report and presentation on this issue, including input from fire and EMS, response teams, substance abuse professionals, service providers, to learn what we, as a community and as an organization, can do to help combat this problem. So I'd like to make a motion that we forward this information to the police department, and ask them to do a presentation sometime in April, maybe?
I thought there was a Worcester County task force that actually puts out some information for our area, did you, I don't, I thought I saw that there was a task force, having to do what that's, I mean, I'd be happy to have, you know, to know, and to really coordinate something in conjunction with the school as well.
I'm not sure if we have an officer on that task force or not, but I do see information on that, yes.
I just remember reading, or, I mean, but if we don't, why don't we?
Certainly add that, them and, and the schools?
Yeah, can we, yeah, maybe just, let's kind of see what, uh...
Make sure the chief does a comprehensive reach out.
Chief Bennett does, or can do, or, absolutely, it's a definite epidemic.
So I have a motion to have a second?
Uh, sorry?
Motion and a second. Any discussion concerning the opiate crisis? Yes?
I'd like to add one thing, and we're, we're all susceptible to it if we have opiates in our medicine cabinets and don't have it locked. We're, we're the dealers, unknowingly, but we're the dealers. You've got them, and you've got kids in your house, trust isn't the issue, the opiates are.
Right, lock them up.
If you don't lock them up, you've got no control over them, whether it's them, their friends, or whoever. If you've got teenagers, or, doesn't even have to be teenagers, even younger.
Good point, good point, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
That's where the task force should start, because that's what starts them on the needle.
Right.
And once it, once they get on, they, they've got no control.
Understood. You're absolutely right. All right, so I have a motion, and I, Diane, a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Any other discussion? I see none. John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
If I could just get Julie's notes to help me draft the memo?
Oh, sure.
Absolutely, yep.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Assistant issues? Board staff members comments? Board staff members comments, anybody else want to add?
Yeah, I wondered to know why my I G stuff didn't make it on the agenda. Can we make it for the next time, please?
Yep. I, I don't know, I don't know. I'll make sure that's on, yeah.
I think that was on the app.
Thank you, Ellen.
I do not.
Diane, go ahead. Diane, Julie?
You.
I didn't know if I was a citizen or a ward staff.
You can give me whatever you want.
I just have a question.
Sure.
It's kind of the question in town hall today, do we have any news on our town administrator?
On our what?
Town administrator.
Everybody just kinda, I know we've had it done this week, so we just weren't sure.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that you go into your executive session, announcing that you would be reconvening in public, because I expect you'll have a motion.
Yes, I will.
Coming out of that, that will, that, that motion or that announcement will speak to the question.[1757.16]